Call the meeting to order. Hello, everyone. Before we get started, I just want to remind everyone and inform everyone that these meetings are recorded and will be posted on YouTube once the, within several days of the end of the meeting. So just please be aware that these are probably publicly recorded meetings. Without a, before we get started, I want to announce that the board had executive sessions on July 9th regarding personnel in the police department and on July 30th regarding litigation and personnel issues. With that, we'll move to the agenda, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from the July 13th Board of Supervisors meeting. Do I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the July 13th 2020 minutes.
I second that.
Okay. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
I think Kim said aye, but it's on mute, but I think so. Passing unanimously. Moving to the reports, first to the police chief.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of July 2020, the police department officers documented 1,103 incidents in the police department call reporting system. I was able to identify 554 of those entries as incidents wherein someone was specifically requesting the services of the police department only. During the month, the officers issued 123 traffic citations. They investigated 24 traffic crashes and they arrested 12 individuals. Additionally, for the month of July, the department members conducted two motor carrier details at the weigh station resulting in 399 trucks being weighed, three of which were found to be overweight. Six federal motor carrier inspections were performed resulting in numerous violations to include one truck and one driver being placed out of service. Some of our year-to-date totals, the officers have weighed 3,292 trucks, which is still pretty significantly down from last year due to us shifting the way that we're able to run some of our details with the health crisis. They've identified 29 overweights. They've inspected 55 commercial motor vehicles. They've placed 17 trucks and six of their drivers out of service. The officers have issued 668 traffic citations. They've written 168 written warnings. They've made 75, or I'm sorry, 85 arrests and so far year-to-date, we have 7,682 calls for service. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that we recently reached out to the school district concerning the changes to their schedule, their school schedule for this year, beginning at the end of August and starting in September regarding the school zone lights throughout the township. We're working with them currently. They're looking at their scheduling for the year, dependent upon who they're going to have on their facilities and when. We'll work with them regarding the timing of the lights and then we will either get the lights on for their adjusted timing that they need, or the lights would remain off for some duration or at least some portion of the year if they don't have students using the facility like they normally would. And so some of you may either see no lights for a while or lights on a redacted type of schedule, but nevertheless, we are working with the district and hope to get that sorted out soon.
Thank you. All right. Any questions? I move to the treasurer.
Through the month of July, in the general fund, we have collected just, just a tad over 55% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just a little over 55% of our budgeted expenditures.
Great, thank you. Public works?
Right, so for the month of July, the daily average flow to the downtown treatment plant was approximately 1.3 million gallons per day and were no new connections to the DARA treatment system. For the month of July, the township received approximately 6.9 inches of rain, the normal for July being 4.7, putting us about 34.58 inches above average for the year. Or I'm sorry, plus 7.38 inches for the year. Department responded to 133 PA1 calls for the month of July, as well as repaired catch basins on Birch, Robert Dean Drive, Pennsylvania Boulevard, Oak Street, and Blacktop catch basins throughout the Williamsburg Boulevard area. The department was out before some of our significant rain events on July 9th, 10th, 17th, and 22nd to clear catch basins that we know have issues as well as culverts and make sure that there's not going to be issues during these storm events. The department also did go and clean out the ditch line on a section of Downland Forge Road, as well as replace the stop signs on Nord Road and Beach Street. I did want to take this opportunity to just announce that the Norwood Road Colbert project that we had discussed in a previous meeting will begin its emergency work on August 31st. Norwood Road will be closed during this time, but a detour will be posted directing vehicles appropriately. This work is expected to take around two to three weeks, however, due to the nature of the Colbert work, it is very much weather-dependent. So if we get a couple of dry days in a row, it could be a little sooner, opposite if it's raining. On that note, I did also want to mention that the township did receive approximately 7.7 inches of rain during the tropical storm event last Tuesday. And I just wanted to do a quick PSA and whenever that there are barricades or blockings in the road from Euclid Township, to please not drive around them, they're there for your safety. And I know that there was quite a good deal of power outage due to this event. If you ever do see a tree that is down that is maybe taking a little more time, it is more than likely because the tree is wrapped in power wires and we do have to wait for PICO to address that before our road crew can get in to clear the roads. So we thank you in advance for cooperation in future storms, which knock on wood, don't happen.
Fire marshal.
Mike is muted.
For the month of July, the building department continues to review plans and issue building permits and inspect those projects that are under construction. Also had 16 fire responses for the month and one fire investigation.
Great. And fire company?
Sure. The fire department for the month of July responded to 42 alarms. Of those 42 calls, 19 were in Euclid, six in Upper Euclid, eight in West Plaquenham, and nine in other townships. That's the report. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Euclid ambulance, sir.
Just because everybody's muted right now, if there is someone from the Euclid ambulance in the meeting right now, could you just make a, use the chat box and we'll unmute you?
Okay. All right. Well, all right, so can I get a motion to approve the reports? Mayne, can your breath on you?
Thanks, Scott. I'll make a motion to accept the reports as presented and thank you.
I second that.
Any comments or questions? If you have a comment or question, please type it in the chat box. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so moving to the business of the agenda, our first order is welcoming Rebecca Aguilara, who is the constituent advocate with Representative Chrissy Houlihan's office.
Hi there. Well, thank you so much for giving me time to talk in your meeting today. I just wanted to talk a little bit about what Representative Houlihan does in our district and the kind of services our office.
Rebecca, do you have a camera so we can see you?
I actually, my camera's not working so well because of my connection. I have bad connection, so I'm sorry, I'm not able to join via video.
Thanks.
Yeah, so my name is Rebecca. I handle constituent services mainly in immigration, healthcare, and veteran services. Our office, we have three. We have one in Washington DC, Westchester, and Reading. And through those different offices, we offer a variety of constituent services. We can provide constituents assistance with any federal agency, such as Social Security, Center for Medicare and Medicaid, USCIS, Department of State, those kinds of things. So we wanted to take the time to kind of, you know, make people aware of those services that we offer. But just a little bit about Chrissy, she is an Air Force veteran and serves on the Armed Services, Foreign Affairs, and Small Business Committees. Some were able to provide, like I said, service, any service with federal agencies. So far, we've closed about 1,224 cases throughout the three offices in this first term that Chrissy's been in office. We've returned about $2.9 million to the district through a variety of casework and especially through IRS. Our constituent advocate who handles those issues has been very successful in returning money to constituents there. So a lot, a large portion of the dollars returned comes from IRS. We receive about 130,000-plus calls, emails, letters since January of 2019. So one of our big policies is to reach out to every constituent who reaches out to our office in some way. We are nonpartisan, so we help any, anybody. So political party does not matter to our office. We provide assistance to all our constituents in PA6. So I just wanted to let people know that because, you know, people sometimes might be scared to reach out because of their political preference, but just know that that doesn't matter to our office, to provide assistance for our constituents. In our district work, we provide a variety of, we assist in a variety of projects like congressional art competition, congressional app challenge, veteran history project. One of our big accomplishments is that Chrissy whole, has held about 24 town halls, which is probably more than any freshman in Congress at the moment. Every time she's in district, we try to have at least one town hall and somewhere in PA6. So we're really proud about that. As far as the coronavirus legislative work, Chrissy voted for HR 6201, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which included numerous measures to address the spread of coronavirus, including providing paid sick leave, free coronavirus testing nationwide, expanded food assistance, and requiring enhanced protections for healthcare workers. Chrissy also voted in favor of HR 748, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, which is more widely known as CARES Act, which included a broad range of measures intended to stimulate the economy and to address the health threat posed by the coronavirus. Chrissy also introduced the HR 6822, the National Public Health Corps Act of 2020, which will create a national public health service program to respond to public health emergencies such as the coronavirus pandemic. Lastly, Chrissy voted for HR 6800, the Heroes Act, which included a broad range of measures intended to address the pandemic, including assistance for states and local governments, and another $1,200 rebate for each individual and modifications to the paycheck protection program. So those are just a few things that we've done throughout this coronavirus pandemic. As far as regular legislative work, Chrissy voted for the bipartisan HR2 Invest in America Act, which passed the House. The bill would invest nearly 500 billion to rebuild our highways, bridges, transit, rail, airports, ports, and harbors while protecting American jobs with strong Buy America provisions and labor protections. Invest in school and infrastructure, modernize energy infrastructure for a clean energy future, and to invest in affordable housing. Chrissy also introduced the bipartisan HR 6051, the READ Act, to address early childhood literacy, modeled after the PA dyslexia screening and early literacy intervention pilot program. The bill would authorize a pilot program for dyslexia screening and early literacy intervention using evidence-based services for students suspected of having an early reading deficiency or dyslexia. And lastly, in December 2019, Chrissy voted in favor of House passage of the revised US-Mexico-Canada Agreement, or NAFTA 2.0, as it's also known, which was signed into law in January of 2020. So lastly, I just wanted to just offer up our office for any questions or concerns, like I said in the beginning, that anybody, any one of our constituents may have, you can reach out. We also want to encourage everyone to participate in the census. The census will dictate how billions of dollars are spent allocated to local communities, especially in the next 10 years. School district borders and funding are determined largely by the census, so it's really important for us to advocate for our constituents to complete the census. Lastly, I just want to provide our office phone number, it's 610-883-5050. And my email is Rebecca, R-E-B-E-C-C-A dot Aguilara, A-G-U-I-L-E-R-A at mail dot house dot gov. So feel free to reach out with any questions or anything. I can always direct you to the correct person to speak to with any federal agency issue. So, oh yeah, I also wanted to provide Representative Houlihan's website where we have a bunch of different information that's very useful for our constituents, information about, you know, healthcare, immigration, you know, a variety of issues. It's Houlihan dot house dot gov. Houlihan is spelled H-O-U-L-A-H-A-N dot house dot gov. So that's about all I have for today, but thank you so much for giving me time to, to speak to you all and please let me know if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions for Rebecca? I guess we can move on.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, the appointments to the Environmental Advisory Council.
Right, so last week, the EAC held a series of interviews for the three open positions for, on the EAC, and EAC has since discussed those candidates and made a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for appointment. These three candidates include Kimberly Mariani, Nick Kurtz, and Kathy Sotek. So they would be what, who the EAC is recommending at this time.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Kathy Sotek, Nick Kurtz, and Kimberly, Kimberly Mariani to the EAC as recommended by the Environmental Advisory Council. And also thank everybody for applying.
I second that motion.
All right, is there any comments or questions? Again, if you can type it into the, into the chat. If not, bring to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. So welcome aboard to the Environmental Advisory Council, to Kathy, Nick, and Kimberly, and we look forward to working with you. And thank you to the council for, for putting in the work to, to interview people and find, and find the right people for the council.
Oh, one of, one of the new members, I guess, is here tonight?
And just for the members that are, the new members that may be in the audience, we will be reaching out to you tomorrow with more information.
With that, I'm going to move forward with the next item, which is the Act 537 Plan Special Study Presentation by Gannett Fleming.
One second. So we have, Ed, Ed Woden and Patty Kaufman are with us. Can you, can you guys hear us right now?
Okay, Scott.
Okay, there we go. I just want to introduce Ed Woden and Patty Kaufman from Gannett Fleming. They've been hard at work putting this plan together for us, and I do believe that they're going to go through a PowerPoint presentation here, just to kind of give a brief summary of what it is that we are proposing this evening.
Thank you, Scott.
There we go.
I assume everybody can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. For anybody who, you know, was at the planning commission meeting, I guess, back last, earlier year, last year, we did something very similar. So if you saw that, you'll make memories. As Scott had mentioned, the township undertook the Act 537 Special Study for the Shemona Trunk Sewer Extension back in September of last year. The presentation tonight is sort of a summary and is, is the, the sort of the wrap-up or the finalization of the township's work on this before it gets submitted to the DEP. So whoever can hit the advanced button, I'd appreciate it.
Can you see the PowerPoint?
We can see the PowerPoint.
See the cover sheet, but I'm not seeing it advanced.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I do that or does somebody else have to do that for me?
I'm doing it, so just.
Just, just for anyone who doesn't know, Patty and I thought we'd put up a little bit just what Act 537 is. It's sort of the, the sister act to the Act 247 that the state adopted back in the 60s too, probably, which is zoning, you know, ordinance adoptions. 537 is a sewage facilities act that required municipalities to develop and maintain up-to-date plans. Next slide. The alternatives that we looked at, and if you click on the, the next one, we're fancy girl that are there. Alternative one that the township identified and, and we evaluated was looking at an extension of the Shemona Creek trunk sewer for emergency service to the Eagleview wastewater treatment plant in the event of any catastrophic failure of the plant. For anybody who doesn't know the, sort of the background, is there's the existing Shemona trunk sewer runs up along the creek to a point at Penny Packer and Downland Forge is where it terminates right now. You'll see in a little bit, a map that shows the extension of it. So this would be to run the rest of the way up to the Eagleview development and the Eagleview treatment plant. Second alternative we looked at was looking at a extension of the trunk sewer to do the same thing as alternative one, plus permitting the diversion of some flow on a regular basis to our service area. The township has two service areas, service area that goes to Eagleview Treatment Plant and the service area that goes to DARA. And the best alternative, which is common for the DEP, one, there you go, thank you, is no action, is that, and that's just not extending the, the trunk sewer and, and maintaining the Eagleview plant as it is. So those were the three alternatives. The selected alternative that we looked at was alternative number one, which, which is that extension of the plant, or excuse me, extension of the interceptor right now in the event there was a catastrophic failure at the plant. The, the, the construction of this line would prevent any catastrophic environmental problems that would happen in the event the Eagleview plant could not handle the flows that come to it. So that map I was talking about, it's not as easy to see on a little computer screen as it would be on a, on a big screen, but if the upper right-hand corner of the map is where the plant is, thank you very much, she's already doing that. That's, that's the existing treatment plant. The, I mentioned the existing interceptor down at the lower left-hand corner is, is at the intersection of Downland Forge and Penny Packer and, and Peck Road down that where the existing line terminates. This interceptor would follow the Shemona Creek up a little bit along Downland Forge, thank you again, and continue on up to the plant with a small extension of sanitary sewer up Penny Packer to Milford Road to address the, the overlooked pumping station. So the sewage facilities planning, the township was comprehensive in evaluating the long-term solutions to sewage facilities in that area. Next slide, please. The plan has, was out for public comment, and that period ended back in November of last year, no comments were received. It also was required to go through a 60-day comment period to, to the local health department, what, excuse me, the local planning commission, county planning commission, and the county health department. And correct me, Patty, I believe there was a comment received from the Chester County Planning Commission.
Yes, that's correct.
And, and the comment was very, their comment was that they, they thought that the township should be commended for looking at providing this redundant trunk line to service the, the needs of, of the Eagleview, Eagleview area. Other than that, no other, no other comments were received. And the schedule then, that, that we have for this, assuming the township elects this evening to approve the plan, would be to submit it to the DEP this month, and by statute, the DEP has 120 days to adopt the plan. They can ask for extension of that, hope, under these current conditions, I don't know that, that we would see it sooner than 120 days, but it's a possibility that the township could see, see approval earlier than that. But by statute, they have 120 days. So basically, that, that's a summary of, of the, of the planning done to date. Patty, did I miss anything?
No, I think you have it all.
Thank you. So happy to answer any questions or explain any of that that I went through pretty quickly.
Could you give a one, maybe a 20-second summary of what all of that is about because we have many new people? So what, what you presented is then you're asking for?
Sure, Kim. Happy to, you know, Act 537, as I mentioned earlier, is the requirement that the communities, that all municipalities have in Pennsylvania to make sure that your sewage facilities planning is up to date and make sure that you're providing for the attic with sewage conveyance and, and collection and treatment for all the users in your system. As, as I believe a lot of people know on this call, if you don't, I can, I can get into an explanation of the Eagleview plant, that might take a while, but, you know, the township has that area up around the downtown interchange of the turnpike that has its own little wastewater treatment plant, so 475,000 gallon a day treatment plant that handles the wastewater from that area, basically the Eagleview and a little bit into Upper Euclid Township, which is also part of the Eagle, Eagleview development, and some contiguous areas that are not Eagleview-related, but township property, not township properties, but in the, in the township that aren't part of Eagleview. So the, that plant handles those flows. It's probably 25 years old, maybe, maybe older now, and is starting to show some signs of wear and tear. Scott and staff, Jeff Sees and all that have done a, a great job as, as Doug and folks for them in keeping it up to date and running, but it's, you know, it's your job as the municipality to look at the best way to make sure that the long-term needs are being met, and, and this is, this is what the, this is what we looked at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To everybody out there, I had no clue how much time is spent on sewer, sewage treatment until I got on the board. Every single day, they monitor sewage treatment, and for us, we just use our toilet and our showers, right? We wash our dishes, but until I got on the board, I had no clue how much time is spent on sewage. So.
So the, the, what we need to do is pass a resolution to approve the plan.
That's correct. So if, if the board's going to recommend, there is resolution number 2020-16, that would recommend the Act 537 Special Plan Study.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2020-16 to approve the plan for a special study.
Maybe you're on, you're on mute.
I'm coming, sorry.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any comments or questions?
Just because of the way that we have people muted and unmuted, if you do have any comments, please use the chat box and I will unmute you. Just because of the way that we have people muted and unmuted, if you do have any comments, please use the chat box and I will unmute you.
And it looks like we got the, the ambulance report in the chat.
Nobody wants to make a comment about sewage?
So if there's no, if there's no comments, then get a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you Patty for your work on that.
You're welcome. I, I assume you don't need us any longer.
You are free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
Do we want to pause here, Bill, and let our Euclid ambulance report?
Yeah, I think so.
Unmute him very quickly. We apologize for that, Mr. Baxter.
Hello. Sorry for the journey in the meeting late. Got out of work a little late tonight.
No problem.
The Euclid ambulance report for the month of July. We had a total of 324 calls. 134 of them were in Euclid. Year to date, we are all, all the rate already up to 2,389. And for Euclid, a total of 708.
How, how, how is that compared to historical?
I don't have the numbers with me for last year. We're probably online to hit close to 4,000 this year.
Thank you.
Which is up a little bit from previous years.
Sure. I shouldn't come as a surprise, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Do I, I need to make a motion to accept the Euclid ambulance report as Mr. Baxter presented it?
I don't know if we need to, do we need to approve this report? I mean, we can, I guess.
I would think so because he, it wasn't part of the previous reports.
Okay. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Baxter's report for the Euclid ambulance.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
All right, move to the next item. Permission to advertise for MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan.
Right, so basically this evening, what we're asking the board for is permission to advertise our MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan. This is a plan that we've worked extensively with Dan Daley and E.B. Wash and was originally submitted back in 2015. We received comments back from the DEP in 2017 and are now resubmitting our report in 2020. We, we do expect to get this once per by the board into the DEP for final consideration. And just if anybody's not aware, what our, the MS4 program is, it's related to stormwater. And the township has certain responsibilities for reducing stormwater. I think we can all appreciate after the heavy rains recently, so what we're asking for tonight is permission from the board to advertise. Next month, Dan Daley will just give a brief presentation on the PRP that we are submitting to the DEP.
I can get a motion, motion driver.
I'll make a motion to give permission to advertise for the MS4 Pollution Reduction Program.
I second that motion.
Questions or comments?
I have one comment.
Okay, ahead.
Only rain down the drain.
Only rain down, there you go. I have no other comments or questions. I have a motion to for permission to advertise with MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan. All in favor? All right, motion passes. All right, move to request the Autobahn Management Corporation's Turnpike Interchange Property Conditional Use Hearing Requests and Extension until October 31st.
Did we skip five?
Yeah.
Oh, I did. I apologize. Move back.
Talk about snow, but if you can believe it's that time of year already, what the township staff is asking for this evening is for permission to advertise for our snow removal. So going from stormwater to snow, it's been a heck of a year.
I'll make a motion, oh, I'll make a motion to grant permission to advertise for our snow removal bid.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any comments or questions? I have no comments or questions. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Here's a question for the audience. Type yes in the chat box if you remember the Halloween that it snowed.
He forgets.
Okay, keep going.
All right, so moving to the Turnpike Interchange Property Conditional Use Hearing Requests and Extension to October 31st. Autobahn Management Corp.
Yes, so last week at the planning commission meeting, the developer presented a sketch plan for the 169 acre parcel, which is also known as the Vanguard Property. They're looking to construct three distribution warehouse buildings for a total of 1.9 million square feet of floor area along with a 30-acre park with trails and other amenities. For this, they will need a few conditional use approvals and are looking to schedule the hearing September 14th, which would be our, after our next regular supervisors' meeting. And I did also receive a letter from their attorney requesting the extension to hold the hearing and render decision until October 31st. So this would fall within that timeframe.
And so this is just about scheduling the hearing, right?
It is, yes. So if anybody's interested in seeing the plan again, they will be at the planning commission on September 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the conditional use hearing request and the extension?
I'll make a motion to grant the hearing request and the extension until October 31st for the Autobahn Management Corporation. Turnpike Interchange Property, sorry.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion is to grant the hearing request and it's for September 14th. If I say correctly, and with an extension decision to October 31st.
Yeah, I also just add that the planning commission meeting is on the township website if anybody wants to go take a look at the sketch plan.
Oh, the, the previous meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Is there any comments or questions? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so motion passes. I'm going to move to the resolution, resolutions versus Resolution 2024, 2020-14, the preliminary final land development plan for Eagle View Lot 58.
Yes, so as you recall, the plan for Lot 58 was presented for the preliminary final to construct a 50,000 square foot office building. It was approved by the board on May 11th. This is the resolution associated with that plan.
I make a resolution, sorry, Mamie, I make the resolution to, I make a proposal to approve Resolution 2020-14, the prelimi- preliminary final land development plan for Eagle View Lot 58.
I will second that.
Is there any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Resolution 2020-14 passes. Move to Resolution 2020-15, the preliminary final land development plan for Eagle View Town Center Apartments.
Yes, so this is the resolution that is associated with the 44 apartment unit building that was presented to you and approved at the July 13th supervisors' meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-15, the preliminary final land development plan for the Eagle View Town Center Apartments.
All right, I'll, I'll second that. I'm going to draw any comments or questions on the resolution? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? All right, okay. So resolution passes two to one. And moving to the Resolution 2020-17, the traffic signal approval for Peck Road. Signal improvement approval, right? This is a traffic signal improvement?
Yes, it is an improvement with the construction of the Christian Brothers. The traffic signal was amended to add certain cameras and just changes to the traffic signal itself. The plan was reviewed by PennDOT. It was also reviewed and approved by the Township Traffic Consultant, and the resolution was recommended for your approval for tonight.
Okay.
For those who are just coming into this, Christian Brothers wants to put an auto body shop there on the corner of 113 and Peck, which is where the Italian restaurant is. What's the name again, guys? The Italian restaurant?
It's Spatola's, but it's across the street on the empty lot is where Christian Brothers is going.
Right. I just wanted to give them that background.
Yeah.
So I make a resolution to approve. I make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-17 to grant the change in the traffic signal approval for Peck Road and Route 113 intersection.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Resolution is approved. So we'll move on to our Sanoco update. Let me, one second, I'll get the most recent update up. Okay, so regarding construction activities that are occurring within the township, Euclid Township. On, for the ME2 and ME2 X lines, at Herman O. West Drive drilling up towards you, Upper Euclid. The, this act, this site is not active right now. The 16-inch pipe has been previously completed and the 20-inch pipe has not begun. The Herman O. West Drive going towards Wharton Boulevard. The reaming process for the 20-inch pipe is 75% complete. Based on the current progress, pullback is scheduled for late August. And the 16-inch pipe has previously been completed. The site that, which is outside of Dairy Queen on Eagle View Boulevard going towards North Whitford Road, the 16-inch pipe again has already been installed. They're currently finalizing the pilot hole intersect prior to starting reaming and pullback for the 20-inch pipe. And the pullback is scheduled at this point for late October. At North Whitford Road going towards Devon Drive, the the 16-inch pipe and the 20-inch pipe work is now complete. However, restoration work has not, will be scheduled when the North Whitford Road site is going towards Dairy Queen is complete as well as the, the work going from Devon Drive down to Shone Road. And speaking of the Devon Drive to Shone Road, there is they're managing water flow at the Boar Hall in West Whiteland, but not, not within Euclid's borders. The pullback is anticipated in late September based on the current conditions. No work, this is for the 16-inch pipe. No work has started for the 20-inch pipe. And that would be, that would have to be started after the, not have to be, but they plan on starting it after the 16-inch pipe is complete. I know there's some, some issues with the Shone Road area of the pipes, but since that's outside of the township, I don't want to comment on that here. The, also, we have information that bring it up. Sanoco is proposing to install cathodic protection system upgrades on their 12-inch Point 3s to Montello, Montello Pipeline. This will involve work in the areas of Penny Pack Road, Taylor's Mill Road, Fairweather Drive and Route 113 near the Rossi's Golf Center. The exact schedule and conditions for, the conditions for approval as well as an extermin- expiration date for any approvals is still being worked out and should be completed within a few days. The work is expected to begin in August if everything moves as it is now. Also wanted to inform that Sanoco was, was provided in order to abate activities for sound violating the, the Euclid Township code related to their use of some kind of hammer or other device, however you want to characterize it. Just to, to install casing at the, the Whitford Road area that, that they were, they were provided the order and had ceased operations after the order was received. At this point, there are no other activity that would have been in violation of that order. I think, I think that's all of the Sanoco updates. Did I miss something? Okay.
I was just saying, we have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
Yeah. I think Laura, Laura Obensky has a question.
Yeah, I'm going to unmute you, Laura.
Hello. Sorry, it was easier than typing. Laura Obensky, I just had a quick question. I'm aware that the DEP has been working with Shone Road and that drill site there where there's water seeping. I know you said you weren't going to comment, but I am aware that there are some water supply concerns there in the past. Right now, as we have this meeting, I became aware that there was a pretty significant IR that affected Marsh Creek Lake that they're out working on right now. So my question for the township is, as far as water concerns are affecting people in the township with public water, is there any way that you can reach out to the DEP or to Aqua to ensure that water resources in Euclid Township are not affected since we're kind of flanked on both sides now by areas that are experiencing things that could affect our public water supply?
So, yeah, first of all, I'd say yes, we can look into, into how this affects you can infect. You know, whenever there's happening, whatever's happening with this construction program in the surrounding townships, we definitely have been evaluating whether this affects Euclid and requires our intervention. In some cases, we've decided that's yes, in some cases, no. The water supply issues, and I don't want, I don't have all the details. I believe all the properties that are affected by that Aqua fur were already put on public water in, I want to say 2017. I don't want to, I don't actually don't want to say previously. But I do think that, you know, we're watching what's going on with, in West Whiteland with some concern, especially since it's so close to our, our borders and, and if it has any negative impact, of course, we're going to act in the township's best interest. And that's probably as far as I want to take it at this point because it's kind of an evolving situation. Is that it? Okay, thank you. Does it, Mamie or Kim, do you have any, you're in agreement with that? Any other questions? This related to Sanoco right now, and then we'll move to the non-Sanoco issues.
Did Ben want to speak? He typed in a chat box there. He typed a comment in or just?
So I have to say, okay, do you want to? And right, I have to say that by the time we know there's an issue, it is likely too late. Okay, no. Yes, often we didn't, we're working with incomplete information and unfortunately are reacting rather than being able to to, to to act ahead of time. There's only so much that we can control and trust me, we try to get more information, but it's difficult.
It has been residents, Euclid residents who have found indiscretions and, and inadvertent returns and mistakes that Sanoco has made. So kudos to Euclid residents, keep it up. But yes, we can't make them communicate to us. And what we found out in the past is they don't always report things that they should report. So keep it up, Euclid.
Any other comments about Sanoco? All right, so read the announcement and then we'll move to in the open public comments section. So on, all, all meetings will be conducted via Zoom. You can find the link to the Zoom meeting for each meeting within 24, posted on our website, the Euclid Township website within 24 hours of the meeting start date time. On August 13th, Historical Commission Meeting will Uh, on August 13th, historical commission meeting will occur at 7:30 PM. On August 20th, the conference plan meeting is uh, happening at 3 PM. On, again, also on August 20th, the Environmental Advisory Council Workshop Meeting is occurring at 6:30 PM. Um, the, August 26th, the zoning hearing board for the Severn Decision. Um, and the 118 Anover Drive. And the 106 Porco Hollow Drive Side Yard Variance will be occurring. Um, on September 2nd, the planning commission meeting. It meets at 7:30 on um. September 7th, just the notification that the township offices will be closed for Labor Day. On September 8th, the Park and Recreation Committee will be meeting at 7:30 PM. And then our, as noted earlier, our, our next Board of Supervisors meeting is at 7:30 on September 14th.
And all of these meetings are open to the public. So you do not have to be a member on any of the committees or boards or anything to attend. They're open to all, just as tonight's meeting is open to all.
And agendas for these meetings are also supposed to, the day of the, at least the day before the meeting, right, or? Day of the meeting, the latest, I believe. We try to get the agendas out as early as possible. For all the committees. Uh, with that, we'll move to the open public questions and comments.
Do you want people to type their names into the chat box? So we, in case there's, and we need to establish an order for comments? Anyone?
I think that's, yeah.
Is it for any topic, Bill, for any?
Is there any township related topic, yeah?
Nobody wants to mention anything about sewer, the sewer system? And Euclid?
I, I mean, I, I do wanna um, just mention that the way that we have the public comment form set up on the township website. That we have received um, a few comments based on the Gray Brothers property. One of those was from Ben here. So Ben, if you would like to make a statement, I'm happy to unmute you. But I did wanna just let everybody know that as that project moves forward. We're gonna try and be as public as possible with the um. The meetings that they'll be attending, but as of right now, Tara, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that they're scheduled for any agenda.
As of right now, no. Um, they were at the last planning commission back in July. And presented a sketch plan. Since then, they are revising their plan and doing the traffic study. Uh, and resubmitting, and we have not received a resubmission as of yet.
Okay, so I'm gonna first unmute Ben and then I will follow with B Burger.
All right, can hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Uh, so I'll just make it quick and, and I think that everybody um, probably understands uh. Where we're coming from. I'm the current president of the Rhonda Homeowners Association. And I've been in communication with a lot of the people in and around uh, the Gray's Farm area and uh. We understand where the township is in this process. But we just wanna make it very clear what our concerns are, that we do have concerns. And that uh, they range from traffic management, they uh, deal with the uh, remediation. The fact that the developer wants to sort of bypass. The township requirements for remediation prior to acceptance of the um. Of the project itself. And um, we're gonna be keeping our eyes on this and we wanna be um. Vocal participants in this because it affects our life here in Euclid Township. Just basically giving everybody a heads up, we're here, we're watching. And we appreciate what the township has been doing, you know, up to this point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks very much for taking my question. Hi, this is Barry Berger. I apologize, my camera's on the fritz night also. I just have uh, two requests uh, you know, because obviously gray farms will be an issue you'll be addressing in future sessions. One, uh, the township has an excellent website, but one of the things I couldn't find. And I'm wondering if, if it's available and I just missed it. Uh, one of the things that's relevant to this project as it moves forward. Is the township's ordinance on subdivisions and land development. Uh, would it be possible to post that ordinance so it can be um, easily read by township residents? Uh, and my other request, that as you go forward with the process, will? The planning commission and, or the board of supervisors be furnishing more information about the? The applicant, the developer. Uh, because obviously in connection with most subdivisions developments, the financial viability of the developer is relevant. And at least at this point, there's not a lot publicly available that I've been able to find about Worthington property. So. Those are my two requests and uh, if that ordinance is available on the website, and I just missed it, I'd appreciate if you could tell me where I find it. Thanks a lot.
The ordinance is available on our website. If you go to Euclid.com. Um, and you hover over the menu at the top. I believe it's under services. You'll see codes and ordinances.
Can you type that, uh, paste that link into the chat box?
Sure, if you go to chapter 260, you'll see the subdivision land development ordinance. And 265 is our zoning ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and there's also, there's also another way to get it, and I do this all the time myself. If you just Google Euclid Township ordinances and look for the, there is something called Ecode 360. Which is essentially an electronic version, very user friendly. Of the entire ordinance, the zoning code and the SADO, um, you can get it that way as well.
Thanks again.
Is it that one, Mark? The Ecode 360?
Looks like it. Let me try and click on it. That's it.
Alright, is there any other, any other comments? I think we, I think we appreciate how, how much attention the Gray's Farm has already, you know, already garnered and. We're definitely gonna keep everyone uh, fully informed as much as we know, as we, you know, as we know it and can, and share it and. Like's been said before, encourage you to participate in the planning commission meetings. Um, and in any, you know, those types of discussions because that's a lot of times where you can get. Action and, and concerns heard as early as possible and uh, so I encourage, so.
You know, just in general, the planning commission meets every, the first one save every month?
Correct.
At 7:30 PM.
And then the agenda is usually available when? So that they, people can know when, what's gonna be posted.
Usually the day before it's posted. But anybody's always welcome to send me an email as well. My email address is on the township website.
Thank you. Alright, is there any other comments? Uh, if not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's take about a five minute break and we'll, we'll reconvene for the conditional use hearing for Max Out.
And that's a public meeting, so if you wanna stay, you're residents, you can stay.
So we'll start at 8:35. Is everyone back and ready to get started?
Yes.
Alright, uh, Mark, you wanna, you wanna take it?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a conditional use hearing. For Exton Max Out LLC. Uh, who is the applicant. The applicant is proposing to operate a strength and conditioning personal training facility. For individuals and small groups in building 19 located at 247 Welsh Pool Road. Exton PA. Building 19 is owned by Jabob Holdings LLC. Building 19 contains approximately 25,546 square feet. Of which the applicant would lease approximately 5,069 square feet. The applicant seeks a conditional use for the, uh, for the proposed use pursuant to section. 509.5B of the township zoning ordinance. Which relates to uses permitted by conditional use. Uh, including any other uses determined by the board of supervisors to be of the same general character as the permitted use. Or permitted uses. The applicant is requesting that the board of supervisors grant conditional use approval. As well as such other relief as the board of supervisors may deem necessary and appropriate. Um, and before, um, couple of things before we turn it over to the applicant. Um, we have five more exhibits um, that I'd like to uh, go through. Uh, exhibit B1 is the conditional use application dated July 2nd, 2020. Exhibit B2 is the uh, hearing notice to the Daily Local. Exhibit B3 is the proof of publication in the Daily Local on July 26th, 2020. And on August 3rd, 2020. Exhibit B4 is the abutting property owner's uh, notification. And exhibit B5 is the draft planning commission minutes from this past meeting on August 5th. 2020, where the planning commission um, approved with a couple of conditions. The, um, or recommended the conditional use application. I'm gonna ask the applicant if there's any objections to those exhibits.
Good evening, good evening, Alpha Scaldo, on behalf of the applicant. I have no objections to those exhibits.
Okay. Is, is there anyone, I'm gonna go through what party status is. I'm gonna ask if there's anyone who would like. Party status to this conditional use hearing. Um, party status is something that's available to people who might be impacted by the use. It gives you. The ability to fully participate in the hearing, including cross-examining witnesses to the extent necessary. Presenting a case and testifying on the record. However, you do not need to be a party in order to provide public comment. Anyone at the public comment period is entitled to provide public comment. The only limitation is if you're not a party. Um, aside from not being able to prove your own witnesses and the like. Um, you cannot appeal. Um, if you, if there's a decision that's not to your liking. Just because you are a party doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna be able to appeal to the Court of Common Pleas. There's a whole. Another set of standards that apply there on whether you can pursue your appeal. But if you're not a party, um, you can appeal. So with that, and there's a fee of $20, uh, if you wanna be a party. So with that. I'm gonna ask if there's anyone in the public today that wants to be a party to this conditional use here. Okay, I am here, I'm seeing none. Is that right, Scott?
I do not see any comments at this time.
Okay. So at this point, I'm happy to turn the hearing over to the applicant.
Thank you. Yeah, Alpha Scaldo, um, behalf of Exton Max Out LLC. With me tonight are, are Dan Blake, a co-owner of um, Exton Max Out. And Frank Tavani. Uh, he prepared a uh, traffic and parking demand study uh, for this application. I'm happy to provide uh, you know, uh, typical direct testimony from my witnesses, or if the board prefers. Uh, since there are no parties in opposition, I can present an offer of proof to the board and have my witnesses adopt that testimony and of course. Be available for any questions um, or comments that the board may have of them um, at, at the board's discretion.
Uh, I do not have a problem with the offer of proof. I would ask that before we do that, we do swear the witness is in so that when they. When they give their assent, it's, it's under oath.
Of course.
Okay, raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, so this is an application for conditional use for, for um, Exton Max LLC. It's a small group personal training facility, um, which actually was located um, in another part of the um, Pickering Creek Office Park. Uh, for the last, for the last seven years. Um, and recently relocated to uh, 247 Welsh Pool Road. They signed a lease for five years with a five year option. Um, I did prepare a package of exhibits which I, I provided to Tara last week. I'm sure that you have copies of them. There are. There are nine exhibits in the application package, a copy of the application. Uh, the letter of authorization from the landlord allowing us to present this uh. Hearing. Uh, there's an aerial photograph at exhibit three, a site plan of property. Uh, which we'll speak to at exhibit four. Location of the actual lease premises within the building on exhibit five. Provided some site photographs to orient you to the site in exhibit six. Um, floor plan showing the layout of the gym. Um, at exhibit seven, then Mr. Tavani's parking study at eight and his CV at nine. Uh, this building is located at 247 Welsh Pool Road. It's in the PI Plant Industrial District. Tara, if you could, if you could pull up exhibit three, which is the aerial.
Give me one second.
Yep. Go farther. If you do, if you do, if you do like the thumbnails, it's usually, you can see them easier. I don't know if you have that capability on your. Adobe, but this, I think during the application right now, I just keep paging through it, you'll get, there's two. Three should be the aerial. There you go. Perfect. Thank you very much. So this, this is an aerial of the, of the Pickering Creek Industrial Park. You'll see it's generally at the southeast corner of 113 and Gordon Drive. So, uh, just to orient you to uh, Max Out used to be. In the white building at the corner of Phillips and Gordon. Um, right in that area. Uh, now we're gonna be relocating into the center of the, of the photograph. Um, you'll see where it says tagline. Uh, that, that is, that is the area where 247 Welsh Pool Road is located. It's in the, the black building above the blue. Uh, marker that says tagline. Um, directly below that blue marker is the tagline building. Tagline and 247 Welsh Pool Road share the parking lot um, in between the, the two buildings. It's a 40 space parking lot and there's, tagline has some additional parking. Also, within the industrial park, um, in the top right corner. You'll see uh, tennis addiction, uh, which is another fitness facility located in the, in the PI District. And down at the bottom of the picture, um, near where it says Automotive Training Center. Just to the left of the words Automotive Training Center is a, is a building where Gym Olympic is uh, located. At 261 Welsh Pool Road, another fitness facility. Um, and in 2015, if the board will recall, uh, Mahonster Sports Center uh, was approved, although they, they never opened. Uh, another gym facility located um. In the building that says the, the Protection Bureau, it's located um. Just, yeah, exactly, exactly, Tara, thank you. So um, clearly there's been a number of fitness facilities existing and, and proposed uh, in the um. In the PI District, in the, in the industrial park. We appeared before the planning commission last week. Uh, they voted unanimously uh, to recommend approval of uh, of this use. Tara, if you could pull up the site plan, which is the next exhibit, I think. So this, this is, this is the property. Um, building 19 is, is where Max Out would be located. The shared parking is in the, in the middle there below it, and then tagline is in the, the building 20 uh, beneath that. Uh, Max Out will occupy about 5,000 square feet in the center of building 19. Tagline utilizes 5,000. Tagline utilizes 5,000 square feet to the right side of the building, just for storage. There's another potential user coming in for another 5,000 feet in the building, but they're going to be limited, if they do sign a lease, to eight spaces. And there's 10,000 square feet of unleased space currently. So Max Out was located at 180 Gordon Drive for seven years. With the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, they decided to be proactive and relocate their building, or their use into a building that could provide a better experience for their clients in the current condition. Building at 247 Welsh Pool Road provides for higher ceilings, a more, a more spacious space to allow the building, the, the clients to spread out more within the facility, and also has a loading dock door that can be raised and provide fresh air, fresh air for the site. Tara, if you could, just scroll down to the next exhibit. This is where they were located within, within the building, and then the next exhibit, Tara. Exhibit six. These are, these are photographs of the, of the location. Here you're looking into the site from Welsh Pool Road. 247 Welsh Pool Road is on your left, and Tagline is on your right. Then scroll down to the next picture, please. Again, this is, this is looking just to the left of the entrance. The next photograph is just to the right of the entrance. And if you continue to scroll down, this is a view of the parking lot, looking out towards Welsh Pool Road from the rear of the parking lot. You can see, these photographs are taken on a Friday, or around, around noon. You can see how, how few spaces are being utilized in the, in the parking lot currently. And if you continue to scroll through those photographs, this is again the back end of the parking lot, looking to the right by Welsh Pool Road, 247, and then the back of the tagline building. So, you know, again, during, during the onset of the pandemic, Max Out stayed active and relevant with their clients, providing Zoom, Zoom workouts and, and outdoor bootcamps and written at-home workouts, but again, they saw the opportunity to provide a, an enhanced experience to make their clients comfortable. Max Out is a different sort of training facility. They do individual and small group personal training by appointment only. This is not a, this is not a lifetime fitness type of, of use. This is a by appointment only, small group. Usually, three to six people in a group, maximum of 12 people, 12 clients in the facility at any one time. Lessons are for one hour at a time. One trainer per every three to six clients at any one time. They do core speed and agility training classes there. What's ideal about this use in this location is that their peak use time occur off-hours of a typical business day. They operate from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Monday through Friday, and then from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on the weekends. But their, their peak use time is between 5:00 and 8:00 AM, and then on weekdays, and then again from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on weekends before and after the typical workday. Adults will come in with their groups in the morning, typically or individuals in the morning, and then in the evening, it's, it's youth sports teams and, and, you know, smaller groups. And then again, as a complimentary use, most of their clients arrive in carpool situations, and if they are youth teams that utilize the facility, there's a lot of parent drop-off and, and pickup. Again, so there's not a lot of cars in, in the parking lot at any, at any one time. This is a, this is a user that is, again, has been in the community for, for seven years. Their clients are local families, local employees, local businesses, local teens. They value being a part of the community. That's why they stayed where they are, you know, in the center to continue their relationship that they've developed over the last seven years. They're also, they also provide, will give back to the community participating in Chamber of Commerce events. And they really are looking forward to opening up in this, in this new space. Mr. Tavani had provided a parking analysis of the property, taking into account this use, the existing uses, and the potential uses in 247 Welsh Pool Road and the entire building, and then, you know, incorporating into that analysis, Tagline's use of its property. Mr. Tavani's report is contained and exhibited in your packet, and his conclusion was that there was more than sufficient parking on the site to, to serve all of those uses. If I could, I'd have Dan and Frank individually, one at a time. Dan, you go first. Did you accept the explanation that I provided to the board as being true and correct, and adopt and affirm that as your testimony?
I do, thank you.
And then Frank, the same question, Frank, the same question to you?
Yes, I do.
I don't have anything further. Again, I'm happy to, Dan and Frank are happy to testify in any greater detail that the board would wish to pursue.
Does the board have any questions?
I don't particularly about the request. I just want to know what ski ergs and battle ropes are, but that's probably workout.
Dan?
Sure, the, the skiers are a cardio type of equipment, similar to a rower, but instead of sitting and pulling the, the rower towards you, you're skiing in a skiing motion where you're standing and pulling it down to your hips. It's a great workout. And the battle ropes are, are just basically heavy ropes that you would have attached to something where you, you get a cardio workout while also working on your arm strength and, and your shoulder strength.
Oh, I think I've seen that at the Y, okay. I don't have any questions. Bill, maybe?
So, I, I had a, oh, I had a question, I had a couple of questions. As far as capacity, I know, like, right now, I'm sure it's, would be with COVID and everything going on, people are having limited capacity, but what do you anticipate your maximum, maximum capacity would be at any given time, or do you have like a limit of members, or that's what I think?
Sure, so we're able to control that, you know, based on having it done by appointment. So we do try and make sure that our training, we're actually working with our clients and making sure that they're doing the exercises correctly. So as a result of that, you know, we don't want too many members in the gym at any specific time. So we're going to have our trainers working with those groups as opposed to players just coming in, families coming in. And that'll allow us to kind of limit the number of people we have coming. So, you know, a typical maximum, you know, right now would be, you know, around 12 families or so. With the bigger space, we might be able to make that slightly larger to 15, 16. But we're really not looking to have the masses come in at any one point, because it takes away from what we're really trying to do as a company.
Okay, and then I had another, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but Mr. Fascaldo had mentioned that Tagline will be using part of the same building for storage. Just curious if that would in any way present any kind of, I don't know what they're storing there, but it's any kind of potentially hazardous anything for, to have so many people in the same building?
They, they, I don't, I don't think so. They, they've been a tenant there for, for a while. I think it's just overflow storage from their, from their existing facility. I'm, I'm not sure what they're storing, but I'm sure it's.
So, Mamie, we also have to do use and occupancy when anyone occupies a space, so I would say there's no issues with what Tagline is storing there. And then we would do a use and occupancy for this new tenant as well, when they move in.
Okay, thank you.
So Tara, I was going to ask you if we, if you have any objections or any concerns with the plan?
I do not. I just also want to say that I did send the traffic review to our traffic consultant for their comments. Sadly, I have not received it back yet. Due to the storm, he lost power. It was just a little delayed, so I do expect it relatively soon. We can deal with any comments or anything like that, that come up, you know, during the use and occupancy. However, with the previous applicant that was looking to go in here, there was no traffic concerns or parking concerns, since it was more of a complimentary use to the existing tenants that are already there.
Thank you. And we, are we looking for a vote tonight?
If we could, yes, please.
So I have no other concerns with that either. We would obviously give the written decision next month, even if you gave a verbal tonight.
I'm, I'm okay with giving a verbal tonight. Do we need to make a motion?
Well, let's, before we get to that point, let me, is there anyone, is that all the questions the board has?
I think that's all my questions.
So is there any, is there any questions from the public? Okay, so before we, before we get to whether or not there's a vote, let me just move in. I assume the applicant wants to move in the exhibits.
Yes, please.
A1 through A9?
Yes, thank you.
And we're also going to move in exhibits B1 through B5, and they'll be admitted into the record. I, I would say normally the board has the ability to deliberate in executive session. About this, I'm not sure logistically if that's feasible tonight, or if there's any concerns or questions that the board has that, that would warrant that. If, if there are concerns or questions, we can hold off on a vote and, and just do the written opinion at the next meeting, but if the board is so inclined, they can grant a motion to approve the conditional use application of Exton Max Out LLC to operate a strength and conditioning personal training facility in Building 19 located at 247 Welsh Pool Road, Exton, PA. If, if they're going to do that, I would recommend the following conditions as part of that motion. The applicant of the facility will be Exton, or the operator of the facility will be Exton Max Out LLC. The operator may use 5,069 square feet of the 25,546 square foot Building 19. The applicant will proceed in accordance with its application, the plan submitted, all supporting material, the evidence submitted, and all representations made by and on behalf of the applicant. The applicant will proceed in accordance with the recommendations of the Township Planning Commission that were made at its August 5th, 2020 meeting, and any recommendations from the Township Traffic Consultant. And the applicant will pay all township expenses related to the application to the extent not paid. So if, if the board's so inclined, it can approve the motion. I would recommend with, with the conditions I just mentioned.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use for Max Out LLC in Building 19, given that all the other conditions that Mr. Freed mentioned are met, as well as the conditions for the traffic study comes through, and it's clear.
And again, the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, just to clarify that the, it's, it's, we're waiting right now the recommendation from the tra, the Township Traffic Consultant, so to the extent there are any, you know, compliance with those.
Right.
All right, maybe did I, I think I saw you say I seconded, but I don't hear.
Yeah, sorry, I was muted and I didn't realize it. But, um, yeah, I'll second that motion.
Is there any other questions or anyone comment? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Is, is the applicant agreeable to the conditions that I identified?
Dan, are you agreeable with those conditions?
I am.
So the Board of Supervisors now has 45 days to prepare a written decision. The written decision may contain additional conditions than those that we, we mentioned tonight. The written decision will be, it can be mailed to you at the address in the application. We'll probably announce it at the, at the next meeting, which is September 14.
Yep.
And an appeal can be filed with the Court of Common Pleas of Chester County within 30 days. If no appeal is filed, the decision of the board becomes fine. And with that, unless there's any questions, we can, we can close the record and close the hearing. Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
And Dana and Al, we want to say we're glad that you decided to stay in Euclid.
Thanks for having us. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you. All right, good night, everyone.
Have a good night. Thank you.